Scheduled meeting of the Elgin City Council on this nineteenth day of January two thousand and twenty-one at six oh one P M. Let's go to roll call. We'll start with council members of Ward one if you'll start, please.
Benson here.
Bega here.
Or two? Okay. Or three?
Prince here.
Ibis here.
Dennis here.
Ramita's here. So let the record show we have a quorum. Council members Brasher and council members Gonzalez are not here. Both of them have called and explained their absence. Can I hear? Can I get a motion to excuse the absence of council members Brasher and Gonzalez?
Some of them.
Okay.
Second, Pinson.
Okay, the motion made by council member Dennis seconded by council member Pinson to excuse the absence of council member Gonzalez and Brasher. Council member Dennis, if you'll go, please.
Dennis, yes.
Ari, yes.
Ramita's, yes?
Pinson, yes.
Bega, yes.
Ibis?
Prince, yes.
Ibis, yes.
Okay, the motion made and passed, excusing council member Brasher and council member Gonzalez. Next on the agenda is item number three, the invocation. Council member Pinson, if you would, please.
All right, let us pray. Our Father who art in heaven, Lord, we come to you with bowed heads and humble hearts. Lord, we thank you for the many blessings you bestowed upon us. Thank you, Lord, for blessing us to come together once again for the meetings of the minds. Pray your blessings upon this meeting to be fruitful and beneficial to our citizens citizens as well as our city. Pray your blessings upon this meeting to be conducted decently and in order. Pray your blessings over our country as we go through this turmoil and our unrest or what have you we have. Just pray that you bless our minds and bless our control bless us to control our actions. These are the blessings we're asking Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mary. We're gonna, we're gonna skip over to item number five on your agenda, and that's public comments. As, as I have been told, there are no public comments. Is that correct, Tom?
That is, Mary. That's correct.
Okay, there are no public comments at this meeting. We'll go on to the next item, item number six in your agenda, and that's the city managers report. Mr. Mattis?
Thank you, Mary. The first item on the agenda is, again, follow-up discussion that we've had before relative to potential neighborhood traffic and safety improvements that we've been discussing here for the last couple of months. As councils aware, this was a, this is an effort that was started and focused on being responsive to citizen concerns expressed by different folks that are living in what ended up being four different parts of town. Citizens have reached out to their council members, asked for us to take a look at their concerns. We've done that and staff had made an initial presentation to the council about potential improvements in each area. I should say first that these are all, a couple of things that we had talked about before. Unlike a lot of situations that we get into, these were all four areas where the staff assessment was that, that some improvements, some upgrades would be helpful. And also, I think more importantly than most is these are four projects that we thought we could make certain upgrades that were affordable within the current budget and operations typically. Improvements people seek are almost are oftentimes too expensive or not within our legal authority. And in this case, we just happen to have these four projects come together in a way that, that made them manageable from our standpoint if there was a desire to move forward with them. So we had these four different projects. We had four different scenarios to brief the council on. After that initial briefing, the council agreed to provide input to the staff. So in, in each case, we got individual comments from a majority of the council members sharing with us their, their individual observations about things they liked and they didn't like about the different projects that, that the staff had proposed. So over the last month or so, we, we took that information and turned it into a general matrix where we contrasted the individual comments we've gotten. And the good news is, for the most part, I think the council, individual comments showed that the council is generally on the same page about some of the problems and potential improvements. We only had a couple of cases where where there seemed to be a direct, you know, conflicting opinions, if you will, about what should be or shouldn't be done. So so, but in the end, we're back here tonight to make, to show you some revised presentations that we think are still workable scenarios that can, can meet what I talked about before about as far as being affordable and something we can control. But I think the main point I understand is what, what we're presenting tonight is our, our revised projects that we believe reflects the input of the majority of the council, while at the same time are consistent with traffic engineering best practices and frankly, the law, things that we, we're comfortable with doing from the staff standpoint. Now, of course, in the end, if we do any of these or all of these or do none of these improvements, that's obviously we're seeking that direction from council. But but I think as you're gonna see, you're gonna see these projects are, are more moved toward the middle where, where we think the council will support them. Now that order, we're gonna talk about them in tonight. I've changed that up a little bit. But that's because, as I think we all talked about and recognized before, the first two projects on this list, the Houston and Madison and then Hillside Drive are both are pretty much truly local neighborhood issues on, on city streets. Numbers three and four, South Avenue A at the Loop and Ramirez Road obviously are, have a direct impact or, or will, will need support, I guess I would say, if nothing else, from Tech Dot to make some of the changes we're talking about there. So both of those projects have a Tech Dot element to them, and I can share with you, we've got a meeting set with the staff and, and Tech Dot staff here in about a week or ten days. So we've got that meeting set. So we'll be talking to them in the near future and sharing with them some ideas here and, and some other issues we have in other locations in town. So so just say going into it, whatever decisions we make about those two projects, we'd certainly recommend if there's any decision or direction made tonight from council, that it be contingent upon a, a sign off or, or acknowledgement we'd get from Tech Dot on those two. But the first two are kind of almost a little bit of low hanging fruit. I'd say they're less complicated. So we, we'll just go through those first and, and go through them one at a time. I've got Bo on city engineer, Bo Carries on, and he'll provide a, a run through. You know, we're taking, I guess I would say our, our discussion here is based on and took into account all the other prior discussions. So I assume we don't need to start over on each one, but, but we'll just have Bo can explain more in detail about kind of what adjustments he made on each one. So, Bo, are you ready?
All right, I'm ready.
All right, we'll go on to Houston and Madison first. This seems to be more the easy one, so.
So essentially taking in all the account from city council, essentially what we came up with, what was originally discussed and proposed was making a three-way stop there at Jack. And so that we have here shown, it'd be a true three-way stop, and that would break up that long run that occurs down Madison Street when people are traveling that way. The other proposed stop sign and a lot of support was adding an additional one there at Madison and Houston, which would basically create essentially another three-way stop there between Madison and Houston as well with traffic. That's what I've shown here on, on this particular, it's pretty straightforward for this particular area. Not a whole lot there. Usually the recommendation would be to go ahead and do a, a stop signs study that essentially just backs it up with the, the police flow rates through there with traffic counts, looks at the type of street, the width, the lengths, the the distances of the intersections from each other, and then just kind of formalizes that. But again, this one was pretty straightforward with all the comments.
Council members?
I just have a quick comment, Mayor. It's good to see Bo that, you know, perhaps we will be able to fit in the proposed stop sign there at Houston-Madison. I think that's also going to take care of just some lingering comments here and there over the years, just regarding that long stretch on Houston. So if we can make that happen, I think that would be ideal and certainly make those folks living at that closer to intersection really happy and probably feel pretty confident just in safety, traffic calming overall.
Okay, good. Mary, I want to just keep going. Yes, Bo.
Yes, sir.
Bo, that, the, what you're suggesting here is basically agreeable to what the comments were from the city council members that turned stuff that turned projects in?
Yes, what basically I took all the comments from city council, like Tom said, put them into a matrix. This is basically what came through all of them from an engineering standpoint, subject to study. There's nothing that, you know, that it all fits within M U T C D requirements and essentially from a recommendation standpoint, I wouldn't at this point in time be recommending against any of those comments that were made for this particular one. I think they all fall in line with what we had discussed previously as well.
Okay. Any other comments on this one before we move on? Okay, Tom?
Well, and like we said, that, you know, that was, that was the easiest one. But, but yeah, you've got it right, Mary. As we move on, you know, those, we're, we didn't plan on going through all the comments we received tonight, but it, there are a couple that, that, but I think for the most part, we feel like what we're presenting is reflective of what the group said kind of as a whole. So the next one here is, is Hillside at Old McDade. This one changed up quite a bit based on the feedback we've got, but, but it's still a project that we think is a little bit bigger, be a little more expensive for us, but still something that we can manage within our operating budget and utilizing city forces. Bo, go ahead.
Okay, so similarly, same thing, did the matrix. I think one thing everybody would agree that came out from the original recommendations of, you know, eliminating the left-hand turn lane. It was pretty adamant that they wanted to continue that with Brenham to Old McDade. So we rethought the process, went looked at the requirements, and rather than eliminating essentially that island or that no man's land, we actually turned it into, you know, a very dedicated area that would basically be a dedicated right turn lane from Old McDade onto Brenham Street for that traffic. And it also provides a dedicated left turn lane when you are coming from Brennan and making that turn to Old McDade, where those traffic would be protected. In addition, you can see the proposed stop sign that would be at Hillside and Old McDade. And the two new stop signs there where they're, where they're basically positioned is it gets those traffic out of the way, it gets them in a stop position, and it sets them up to where they have clear line of sight for oncoming traffic, essentially. So if you're traveling down Old McDade Road and you're heading towards Old McDade, you would essentially go past those dedicated turn lanes and you would come to a stop position, in which case someone that is coming down Brenham and making that left-hand turn, you're not in conflict with them before you were to continue on down Old McDade Road. It's not a negative, but in keeping with can we go do a bolt-on out there? The one thing is, is that currently Brenham Street is not wide enough to accommodate that protected left-hand turn lane. The minimum wall lane widths have to be ten foot wide. So you're looking about adding on a four-foot section of pavement there in order to make this all work. So that, not necessarily a negative. There'd still be some engineering. Again, granted, I haven't gone out there. We haven't done a detailed survey and I'm using aerial maps and walked off distances, but in theory, this would meet all the levels of what council reverted back to on the matrix, which is maintaining that left-hand turn lane and making a safer condition at this three-way intersection in addition to the hillside.
Yeah, I think this, obviously the drawing's a little busier, you can see, than, than the last time, Bo, if you remember, but this, it was, it frankly was a simpler approach for us to, to not allow certain turns or access points and but, but the work Bo's done here is basically we'd make an improvement, but maintain a, a fully functioning full access intersection here where the last presentation, we weren't going to be able to do that, so.
Bo, we added two stop signs? Is that what we did?
So for this proposed layout, yes, sir. Essentially, you're relocating one stop sign. So there's already that existing stop sign that's on Old McDade Road right there. Actually, we're basically moving that further to the east. And then we are adding a new stop sign there at the intersection at Hillside and Old McDade Road when you're going to hop, when you're traveling to the westerly direction of Old McDade, coming from the east.
Okay. Council members, anybody have any comments or questions?
Anything, Mayor, other than just, it's good to see. I know the proposed stop sign there at Hillside and Old McDade Road kind of addresses the original. But one of the initial comments and concerns of that area is, is people pulling out of Hillside simply cannot see oncoming traffic coming from one direction of Old McDade Road. So in this case, the assessment, you know, has required a look at the big picture, which is that entire intersection. So it will be interesting to see eventually what that's going to be like. But I think that for the most part, you know, we've gone above and beyond to improve that intersection in addition to addressing the original problem, just making it safer for those pulling out of Hillside to enter into oncoming traffic.
Okay, and I think it definitely does that. It'll take some getting used to, obviously. Well, everything that we do, that we're looking at here would take some getting used to. But I, I think it did address the concerns that were brought up, yes.
If I could, I'd just add on that part. I think it's an interesting lesson, if you will, of how these things work. The truth is, that was really was the original concern was, can't you move that stop bar out further on Hill Street, Hillside, so I can see? And, and we really started with that premise and, and only that premise, and it, it turned into this. So it is, it is a case of, of, you know, that's, that's sometimes what happens. It, it can turn into a lot bigger conversation. But I do think at the end, y'all are right. It, it, while it won't address that specific concern that, that was the first thing we were asked about, it, it definitely forced us to look at the intersection and, and we observed some other things that needed or was appropriate to address. So in the end, I think it will be an overall big improvement. All right, we're done with that one. We'll jump on that. Obviously, we can circle back to any of these if, if there are questions at the end. The next one is South Avenue A at Loop one oh nine. This is another one that pretty straightforward. And, and again, I think we had general agreement from council about the first steps. But as I said before, we'll definitely want to engage Tech Dot, but, but this is one pretty much, Bo, right? We had general agreement about and from council and, and the changes you've made.
Yeah, I think you'll see here, most of the council came together and what they saw there, which was one, getting rid of one of those ingress egress approaches to South Avenue A and making one as a uniform. The other one was the people's ability to make a left-hand turn lane that is either they're doing it and they know they're not supposed to be doing it or making it more obvious that they shouldn't be doing it. And we've shown those improvements, but this is one that is going to require signage to be placed out on Tech Stop right away. And you can see the cyan lines there. Those dictate the text stop right away in this area. So is it feasible to put a no left turn lane there at the stripes? Absolutely. But before the placement of that sign, we would have to have the buy-off by the Tech Stop office in Bash Drop. So it, I, I think this captures everything that everybody wanted to see. I, I think it's a good interim step if Tech Stop is willing to do there. Obviously, we want their approval in case there's any improvements that they have that by giving up that driveway or doing anything else that would have a negative impact on that intersection for their one oh nine plans in the future. But I think this is something that they would be unopposed to allowing that signage to go in as we show on here.
And as, as we talked about before, the plan would be to, to close whatever form it takes. We'd be closing off the one lane temporarily. We wouldn't permanently seal it off at first just to see how it worked.
And, and did I hear you? Let me make sure I understand. Coming out of the Stripes parking lot onto Loop one oh nine, we're gonna have signage, possibly if this is approved, have signage that says you can't take a left?
Yes. So what we kind of looked at, and again, we were doing baby steps here, but essentially putting a no left-hand turn sign right there when you would be leaving the stripes. So you don't have people making that left-hand turn and then ultimately trying to make another left-hand turn onto South Avenue A back that direction. In addition, we would also put a no left turn lane because, and I know Tech Stop's not a big fan of it, but essentially it's proposed I feel that they're gonna make you do that if, to do the one at the stripes, is to put a no left turn lane there so that if you're traveling on one oh nine towards Main Street, you're not going to be able to take a left on the South Avenue A there. We can present it without that. I mean, technically, that's an illegal turn movement because you are crossing a double line there. You're not supposed to be making that left turn there. And because there is no queuing line, it keeps everything open on one oh nine for traffic to continue through. If council were to have a reservation with showing that, then that would be something that we could potentially take off. But again, the idea is you, South Avenue A is not necessarily meant to be that through street. We've already had that discussion as far as the way that the streets are laid out through the thoroughfare plan for the city is it's really Cleveland Street that's meant to handle a lot more traffic than South Avenue A. And so it can be a silent nose time there, or you can put it there to try to push it that direction.
Do any of the council members remember when, when the citizens brought up the possible concerns here, the, the council members remember was taking a left turn out of Stripes parking lot part of the concern? Or is that something that we're adding in here?
Mayor, I can, that, oh, go ahead.
Yeah, I was saying citizens brought that up specifically, and it was listed on the council matrix specifically as well.
Okay.
Yeah, may I also add that much like we're talking about a left-hand turn coming out of South Avenue A that at this point, because you're crossing a double line, theoretically cannot do that. Is that correct? The same would go for coming out of Stripes parking lot. It's not that we're saying that drivers can take a left. It's just they really can't because they're crossing a double line, correct? So we're just reinforcing the thought of, or with signage, just reminding folks, you're not supposed to cross the double line coming out of Stripes. That's how that should be clarified, correct?
We're basically adding signage to further make drivers aware in that area that they're not supposed to be making those turns. Now granted, granted, the people that will obey the signs most likely are the people that are from out of town. And they, they, they don't know their way around and don't know that they're supposed to do. The most likely people who would still go with, with the sign of the double stripes there tend to be locals because they know the route that they're trying to get to and where they're absolutely trying to go. Yeah, and there's no real fix to that, you know, you know, your next line of defense is then you start putting up physical barriers which Tech Stop's not going to want to raise median, obviously, you know, they may put up the big buttons, but I don't think council or the city wants to go to that level at this particular intersection.
Right, right. And I bring that up just again to, to clarify that the city and council, we are not saying you cannot make a left turn. It's the fact that you absolutely cannot make a left turn at this moment, crossing the double line. So we're reinforcing that issue with providing the necessary signage. Hopefully that helps over time.
Yeah, that's, that's right. It, it, that's why in either case, in this particular case, it won't require any further action or legislation on council's part. I was just gonna say, and it, it's just a matter of putting up a sign to remind people what the law is. And I, I guess I would just add that, Mayor, you were talking about the feedback we got at the public meeting. This, just want to say that this, we heard a lot and, and from people on Cleveland Street and, and going back to the west on South Avenue A about speeders and, and speed and that long shot. We're not suggesting this is the only improvement that'll fix everything, all those concerns that way. So I guess I just, I, I, we almost considered the first step to see what'll happen, but, but we may be circling back here later for to, to try to address some of the other concerns we heard from folks about South Avenue A and Cleveland Street.
Okay, any of the other council members have any comments or questions?
Yeah, Mayor, I asked Bo, Bo, didn't we talk one time about possibility of putting delimeters there like we have in front of the post office to prevent those left turns? Is, I mean, that might be an extreme that we come back to later, but just leave that as an option when you talk to.
And, and I did, I did say that. You might have missed it. Now, that would be a hundred percent, still would have to be endorsed and approved by Tech Stop. They're not fans of putting up physical barriers within their right of way like medians and even those buttons, but they will do that. So that would just be something council would be have very understanding is we could go and say, you know, if city was willing to pay for it even and make sure that it met Tech Stop standard and their contractor does the install. and their contractor does the install, um, or they do the install, is they may be amenable to doing something of that nature, but that isn't something that the city could do on its own without their approval.
Right. I, I was just thinking, if you were gonna have that conversation with, with TechStop, you know, is coming up, that maybe you might.
Absolutely. If, if council wants me to bring that up as an option, or Tom to bring that up as an option to see if they're willing to go that far, then we can definitely have that in that meeting.
I think we can ask that question. It won't, we'll, we'll, we'll put that on the table as a possibility just to see, see what they're interested in. I, I would assume, but that's almost like a, uh, uh, another domino effect. They probably won't want to do that right away at first. How that we can get them to go for the signs, then, then maybe that's a backup play to see how it works. But, but we, we can certainly ask them about it, of course.
Exactly. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay.
All right. Well, then, uh, the last one we have is, uh, uh, Ramirez Road at South Avenue C and Main Street. This is, uh, again, actually the, one of the, it's one of the more complicated ones and, and probably the most complicated of the four we're talking about. And, and was a, um, uh, an item that came to us, uh, early last year. The, the first conversation we had about this is probably almost a year ago now. And so we've been, uh, looking through and considering different options. And, and, uh, this is the one we, we got a lot of feedback from council members about, both in the discussion we had at the meeting and then what, what written comments are received. And, and so this is one where I think too, we probably had, uh, a couple of, uh, different opinions about different things. But, uh, but I think the scenario Bo's come up here, uh, uh, hopefully will hit right in the middle. So, uh, with that, uh, Bo, go ahead.
Okay. So, uh, a lot of good comments, probably the most comments on this particular one. So we put it into a matrix. Um, this was probably the one area where we actually had direct conflicts between one saying this way versus one saying this way with council members. So in determining it, we put everything together and some of those conflicts worked out just because if you did that one conflict, you weren't going to be able to accomplish much of any of the other things council members wanted to see. So this layout essentially is a combination where we felt like we could address the maximum amount of comments, uh, from council of what they would like to see done and, and still fall in that, uh, within the record requirements there. So I'm going to start off and just kind of work my way, uh, from left to right across the page. So one would be, again, with the approval of TechStop, continuing out and existing that, uh, do not cross striping that's there on Highway 290. Right now, that bull nose actually ends short of that driveway to Ramirez Road. And it kind of, it's a no man's land. It is a turning, double-turning lane, and people tend to use that to, to head up to Ramirez Road. So by extending out that striping, um, that would essentially, a lot less people would be looking to make that left-hand turn lane there. Now, it is important for you guys to notice, it's one of these chain reactions on this particular one where one thing leads to another. TechStop would have to agree to that. But essentially, by extending out that striping, you are now, when you look across the street, you have Myers there. And one of the reasons that bull nose was ended where it was ended is it because it allowed that full access for people that were exiting Myers there that technically they could go across 290 to the left. Now, most people go over to the light because it's a lot safer. But by extending that bull nose there, people in that particular driveway of Myers, it would basically be, uh, they would only be able to exit on a right and be heading eastbound onto 290. So it is one of those things, granted, people are going to do what they're going to do. Um, but it is one of those things that TechStop may say, sure, we're going to extend this out, but they may also require us to put a right-out-only sign over there at Myers. So not guaranteed that they would request that, but that is a potential on that. Um, the next one, simple proposed one-way sign, you know? And, and right there, and making Ramirez one-way, that would come down again. That alleviates a lot of that cross-traffic, uh, that people were complaining about. If it is one-way, people making that left in there, there's a lot less traffic that would even attempt to do that. The only people that would essentially be making that left now would be those trying to in, uh, enter into the commercial area. But once you make that a one-way, you would expect a significant amount of traffic to stop being there in that particular area. Uh, plus, one way down Ramirez, 2290, essentially, it's a right-on to 290. It, it's in a very protected state. Uh, you don't have a lot of cross-traffic. Um, as we move our way up and, um, Councilman Dennis gave us some layouts and they kind of created some ideas that we started looking there, is essentially, we're looking to get rid of a couple of stop signs. And the reason we're allowed to get rid of those two stop signs is because Ramirez has become a one-way. You know, those would have to remain if Ramirez were to remain a two-way. So by making Ramirez a one-way there, we're able to get rid of those two stop signs where traffic that is coming down 1704 could make a left-hand turn and go straight on South Avenue C without having to stop. Or make a left-hand turn and continue down Ramirez without making a stop and be a continuous flow of traffic. Traffic that would be coming down Avenue C would come to a full stop and it would either make a right-hand turn that would take them to Ramirez. Or we can do it in such a way, and there would be a little bit of playing here. So this isn't necessarily the final and done, is if you wanted traffic to be able to access from South Avenue C to 1704. And this situation is the most simplistic approach, and it really dictates the traffic that someone coming down South Avenue A C, you could really only allow them to do a right turn only and go down Ramirez. You really wouldn't want them trying to cross that intersection to get to 1704. So someone who's trying to access 1704 would still be going down Harris, making a protective right-hand turn because they have the traffic yields to them and coming around on 1704 that way to head in. Another component of that is simply adding the no-through trucks, um, signs there, which as council has gone through this process before, uh, we did a whole, if you remember, there were multiple plans that were laid out for council to approve the, the truck route through the city of Elgin. One was chosen with that ordinance. You can put the signs up, no problem. One of my recommendations would be that is if you do put up no-truck signs, you do try to go back to that ordinance and revisit it, which also takes some collaboration with TechStop and update that map to physically show that Ramirez would not be part of that, uh, route, essentially. Uh, where, you know, otherwise you can put up the signs and the signs will catch as many truck drivers who are willing to obey the laws, uh, there in that particular area.
Any comments or, are, were you done, Bo?
Yeah, I, I'll open it up. Like I said, there's a lot of little moving pieces with this one. Um, and changing some pieces changes everything. But this is based on all of the input we got. This one seemed to address the most of the comments a, as a collaborative effort from council.
We have any comments from the council members?
Yeah, um, Mayor, I, I would say I, I like the looks of this and, and it looks like it's a good flow, and I appreciate your consideration, uh, Bo, of that Avenue C triangle there. I think one concern I might have is that when you get to the bottom of, of Ramirez, um, somebody coming into, off of 290, into the shopping center is not going to pay any attention to whether somebody is coming down Ramirez to their right. And so is there, would there be any benefit to putting a stop sign there at the bottom of Ramirez so that people like stop, is there anybody going into the shopping center? No, they're not. And then they proceed and then stop there at 290.
And, and so that would have to be looked at and what TechStop allows you. So let's say that we are not going to be able to prevent by extending those stripes out there and that kind of become, that still becomes a full-access driveway because of the commercial development there. It is, yes, I would agree with you a hundred percent to put a stop sign at the bottom of Ramirez because you're going to have that cross-traffic. The way it's kind of laid out right now is that driveway that's there out of that commercial district is really meant to only be an exit for somewhat, really only an exit drive for that commercial property. And that's something that we have to consider when it's all said and done. Because if you think about the double line on their other entrance off of Harris, that's really the only entrance. And so all traffic would basically be coming in one direction and coming out the other direction for that commercial property. Uh, so that's one of the considerations. I agree either way, adding a stop sign at the bottom of Ramirez regardless. Even if you do get the striping extended, wouldn't necessarily be a bad thing. It would be just an overlapping safety there.
Right.
Anyone else?
I have something.
Go ahead, Thomas.
The only question I had is, you know, um, from the first meeting, um, Bo, you mentioned that Ramirez is in TechStop's right-of-way. Why is the city having to pay for maintenance if it's in TechStop right-of-way?
Because the city is using it as a local street.
Can we ask the TechStop to maintain that street?
You, you can, and TechStop has helped in the past here and there if they have an overlapping project in the area and you're able to give them the kind of slide out there. It's been a while. I think Ron can tell you that the last time any work was done on Ramirez, but TechStop has helped over there, and I did confirm that with Joe Parton, with the city staff in the past. But they, if you gave them a call and said, hey, we have potholes in Ramirez Street, much like Harris Street, which the city paid, which is a hundred percent in TechStop right-of-way, they're never going to tell you, no, you can't use it as long as you don't give it up that use. But at the same time, they're not going to proactively go out there and maintain it as part of their, um, road system.
Thank you.
That's a good point, Thomas. But, but I, I think what, what we have to keep in mind is we don't ever want TechStop to say, okay, that's our road. And then they can say really whatever they want to say about it. They can say, we'll cut it off, we'll do whatever. So that's what, that's kind of the, the line we have to keep a balance on. But if, if nobody else has a comment, I, I just want to go on record. I appreciate, especially this last one, all the hard work that the council members have spent on this and, and the citizens that have, uh, have expressed their concerns on it. But I want to go on record, uh, on, as saying, I am not in favor of changing Ramires Road to a one-way street. Um, I, I think that's, that's an overreaction. That's just my opinion. I think it's an overreaction. This is a decision that's going to affect literally hundreds of drivers a day. Um, I, I think a, a good first start would be the no-truck signs. I think that would be a good first start. And then possibly some of the stuff that, that Councilmember Dennis was speaking on, on making some improvements on South Avenue C. But I, I ask that all of you just consider that that road, that Ramires, Ramires Road, and you guys know it, but, but I know it because I lived on there and, and because my, my dad lives there still. I mean, literally hundreds and hundreds of drivers use that road both ways. Um, and I understand, I understand that what we're doing is for safety. I understand that. And, and, and we have to, of course, keep that and, and we'll go with whatever the council says. Whatever the council says, that's what we're going to do. But I think we can take it incrementally. I don't think that we have to necessarily be the first step has to be change it to a one-way, one-way street. That's just my opinion. So anybody else that, that want to has, uh, that wants to, uh, comment or has any questions, please speak up.
Mayor, I, I will say, um, we would be addressing one of the original issues, which definitely is, and that's at least where I was approached. It was that no-through trucks was a main issue. Of course, that created several things, speeding as well as just the condition of the road. If it remains a two-way, uh, one of the things that TechStop will either have to help or will have to consider is a, is probably restriping that street or that road. That lot, that was done by request, I'd say about six years ago and certainly probably needs, uh, another coat. Um, but this is a great example of just the complexity of the various issues that we're not only addressing one of the original items, which is the no-through trucks, but also looking to improve it. I don't, I don't have too many strong opinions on making it a one-way. I definitely do see the safety. I think it'll be interesting to see what TechStop comments on as to what we're allowed to do. Um, but if we had to prioritize, I certainly would prioritize no-through trucks and then perhaps what Forrest proposed for that intersection and then perhaps moving down the list of making that Ramirez Street one-way.
Okay, thank you, Jessica. Anybody else?
I have something.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, yeah, if, if, if we were to make that a one-way and, and just like you say, all of the traffic will have to, uh, the, uh, people that comes out of, uh, the shopping center would have to come to the highway or go to, uh, Harris, Loop 109, and, uh, only can make a right out of there. They couldn't go back to the highway from there. Um, because on Avenue, you know, right across the street is where we have a, do not, you know, not supposed to cross the, uh, yellow, double-yellow line in that same area. And, um, we're, uh, we way up there, I'm just saying. And if we were to make this a one-way, uh, would we need, would we, we, wouldn't we need a do-not-enter uh, sign over there also where, um, um, across the street from ours?
I would think so. Uh, Bo, I would think so. But Bo, what do you say?
We, we have the one-way there at the end.
Besides that.
I mean, you can always add additional signage, but as far as what the minimum standard would be for MUTCD to put this into action, that's what you would need to do. I mean, essentially though, from the commercial standpoint, their parking lot and their access essentially becomes a right-in, right-out only points. Both locations.
And, and if. Next, can I jump in here a minute?
Yes, absolutely.
Uh, Bo, if, just for clarity for everybody's sake, if, if we're looking at this drawing, this proposal, if the intersection improvements that you, you're proposing down here at South Avenue C in 1704, if Ramirez is not made one-way, then, then doesn't that change that intersection or does it?
It, it'll change it some, um, not those two stop signs that are there, they can't both be eliminated. Uh, one or the, uh, one of them would definitely have to stay and the striping would change a little bit and there'd probably be a little bit more signage the way it's laid out there to make it a, a safer intersection to keep it a two-way. Um, you know, just, but we're talking signage and striping again. But that intersection, this was boiled down to make it, getting rid of as many signs as possible to throw traffic through. If we left Ramirez a two-way street, that intersection there would change up some.
But not, I'm not, but I'm hearing you say not a whole lot, so.
Not a whole lot.
You could do something like this.
An island and some turn lanes out there in the middle of the abyss, essentially.
Okay. Thank you.
Can, can we go to, uh, Councilmember Pinson, were you done or did you have more to say?
Uh, um, well, I, I was, I was done. I was just, um, this, I didn't realize it, uh, in my mind until we were just discussing, till, um, Forrest brought up the idea of coming out of the shopping center when we go out the other way. Because when I used to drop my daughter, you know, take my daughter to school and I go to the donut shop, we go left onto, uh, uh, from the shopping center from the other side, on, on Loop 109. So, um, it may be a double, uh, yellow, but everybody does it. Because, you know, you have workers going to work. Everybody goes across that highway. I mean, I mean.
Everybody goes across that highway. I mean, I mean, to, to, back to 290 from Loop 109 across that double yellow line. I'm just saying.
Yeah. And, and that's important. One of the reasons this was left is because we're have a few input from text doc too. As you guys can recall, city has requested a meeting with text lot about that intersection at 109. And, uh, same difficulty, it's a, it's an awkward three-way intersection. You know, one of the things that may come out of there is some of these double lines may become median. So one of the, these questions where we're saying, well, everybody does it because that's the quickest and easiest way is some of those decisions may actually be by trying to fix a problem at one area, text box resolution or solution to fix it. It could have an impact not only here at 1704 and Ramirez, but obviously there at South Avenue A and all the way up to the 290 intersection. So I just want to make sure the council understands that, that, you know, we can have an input with there, but it may lead to other ramifications. So some of those things that I'm trying to say in essence, I'm telling you what it should be based on the striping and the way text on has laid it out, the city has laid it out. The way people actually drive is completely different.
I'd like to, I'd like to talk about the scenario that's on the screen right now. If, if Ramitas is made into a one-way street, if I'm traveling home, in other words, I'm traveling eastbound on US 290. And normally I would take Ramitas Road to 1704 and take a ride on 1704. That's what I would normally do. If it's a one-way street, that means I'm going to take a left at the stoplight on 290 and Loop 109. Is that correct? That's the only way I'm going to get to 1704. Take a left there, go, go down Loop 109 to Main Street by Myers. Uh, not, not Myers sausage, but Myers plant. And then take a right on Main to head out 1704? Is that the correct? Is that really the only way to get back on 1704?
No, you can go, um, Monterey.
I could go where?
Achoa to Monterey.
Yeah. Okay. By, by the cemetery back there?
Yeah.
Is, are those streets, uh, are they able to handle the, the hundreds of cars that would be traveling down there? I, I'm just saying that's something to consider.
The, the other option is off 109, take a, take a right on, uh, South Avenue C, correct?
Okay.
Come down that and hit 1704. That, that's still be the possibility. Is that right, Bo?
Correct.
Okay.
So, a- and that is one of the thing is traffic. And being local, I guess that would be one of the questions is is it really quicker to try to make that left-hand turn across 290 to go up Ramirez and then take a right on 1704 than it is to go around Harris? And once you get through that stoplight, you don't have any more impediments. You have right-way traffic all the way back around to 1704. It is, it, are people using it because they, there's, the idea, is it really quicker? I guess is really what I'm asking the question.
My answer would be yes. It's, it's quicker. It's quicker to take Amity's road.
I was at that intersection yesterday, um, facing east at the light. And there was a car traveling in front of me. And as soon as they got through the light, they started crossing the lanes. And so that whole time from the light to Ramirez Street, they were mostly in, in the oncoming lane. Because they were just taking it as a diagonal over to Ramirez. And that was just, I mean, it's hazardous.
And, and, and a lot of this were, I, I, Tom may disagree with me. My intention was when we had the meeting with text doc at the other intersection is I'm hoping text doc will play their cards with what they think the solution or fixes before we put discussed Avenue A or Ramirez. Because what their solution to fixing that intersection could significantly impact both of these plans for the city.
It would.
No, that's correct. We're going to put virtually anything on the table that they, but I think this is the issue, you know, what we're dealing with here is, is the problem. I, I don't. None of these streets were designed, uh, you know, I think we make an argument that they were poorly designed in the beginning, but none of them were intended to handle the hundreds of cars the mayor's talking about. And through this process, we've stood out there and observed cars, trucks, and, and they got to go somewhere. So I think that's the point is it's a pick your poison thing for the council. We can't, uh, going down Monterey, I, I don't. There's right, I, I think, I want to push all that traffic over there, but there's not an easy solution for this. And, and I think it, Bo and I both know throughout our career, it doesn't. Because the path is technically correct and I could prove to you that, uh, it'd be quicker to go around. Uh, uh, I, I mean, we're going to change people's habits. People are used to going this way. One of the things we found interesting the day we were down there, we saw more than one cars the days we've been down there. The people be on 7004, take Avenue C down to the intersection and then turn right and go back on Main Street. All they had to do is stay on 1704 the whole way and they'd be on Main Street. People are used to what they're doing. So it, it's a big challenge to change people's habits, particularly something like this. So I, I don't. And, and it'll be a rough learning curve in the beginning, whatever we do. I, I don't think there's any question about that. But I, I don't, I also don't think any of us believe those numbers are going to go down. We're, we're going to see more and more development happen, going to drive more and more traffic. So, so it's definitely something that, that, uh, we'll have to move on. So, so yeah, I think Bo's right. The, uh, at the Y there that we've talked about with, um, you know, that'll be one of the main topics we're going to talk to text out about. Uh, you know, if, if there were to be a major improvement there, that might impact all of this. So, so it, it, it's just going to be kind of a moving target for us for a while. And, and again, like I said, I think remember we still focus this effort on not expending a lot of funds. These are still things we can do with some signs and, and striping and things like that where we're hopeful that. So it doesn't mean we'd have to make some big permanent change if, if we did anything at all. Um, um, all of this we're proposing would still be affordable. It wouldn't be a waste of money if we just changed our mind later. But I think we're.
And I appreciate all the comments, guys.
Yeah. So when you talk about the why, you're talking about Harris Street and Main Street?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Yeah. Because whatever we do with any of these intersections is actually going to put load on that intersection there. So.
Well, and the irony is, is we talked about before for text dot, for their criteria, putting load on that intersection actually would move it up the list to make them do something about it quicker than, than, so that's the other conflict we have here. If we reduce the traffic numbers going into that intersection, that probably is going to compromise our ability to see a major improvement sooner than later. So, so it's just a weird situation we're in.
Okay. So we'll wait for the results of, of the meeting with text doc and then we'll go with discussion as needed after that. Is the council okay with that?
I think so. One, I have one quick question for clarification for those, uh, two sections that do not need text out approval. Where are we, what are our next steps on timing? Um, and will those come back, I guess, for formal action later? Along with the other two intersections that you're going to speak to text on about?
So for Houston and Madison, if we followed previous council precedent is irregardless of putting the sign, you guys would officially do a warrant stop sign study just to have that documented to do that. If you followed it, obviously you, you are city council, you can just decree things. But, uh, previous precedent was set, former councils that said, irregardless, if we're going to add stop signs, we're going to just have to study irregardless to, as a backup there. So that would be for that one. For the other one, um, I would have to get with city staff to just see what their comfort level is with being able to go out there and build something on that, or if they needed just a makeshift ready shovel-ready design. Uh, you know, we've done some of those here recently on the utility department where we've done a, a, a design that's specific to city staff being able to do the install, which I know, Tom, you've talked about your streets department with these drainage projects and or utility projects that some of these smaller ones, which that would be one that they should be able to hold is if the city would want to do a small design to get that ready for them to put into effect, or if they felt comfortable going out there and just doing it with the tape measures.
Uh, well, I guess, Mayor, if I could jump in, I guess I would, uh, Jessica, I, I, I'd, our idea was that, that this is pretty much, you know, the staff again has brought it to a point where we're waiting for directions. So it, it's positioned on the agenda tonight where council could vote to direct us to proceed with one, two, and even three, uh, if you're comfortable with that, uh, recognizing that we need for number three, uh, text dot sign off. And then as Bo's saying here, that, that may require us to circle back for council for official action to implement those things. But, uh, but I, I really think before we move further on any of these, it'd be appropriate to have a council vote to, to confirm these are the projects you want us to do or, or, or not. So I, I think it's obvious we've, we've still got some work to do on this, this last one, but, but based on what we thought we put together and the comments received beforehand and tonight, it sounds like, uh, we're, we're okay with moving ahead on the first three, i- if we're going to do anything. But yeah, I, I guess to answer your question, the next step is I, I think it'd be appropriate for the council to decide what they want us to do and direct us that way before we do much more.
So this could be an action item as it is right now?
Yeah, at, at least as far as that goes, yes. I think to endorse these plans and, and to move forward is appropriate. I, I think that's enough. And, and frankly, I, you know, that we've talked about it so much. I think that's kind of clarity, everybody, we, we could get on the same page about now. As Bo said, there's, there's probably official action required. There's different follow-ups we'll do and we could circle back to council then. But, uh, but just an endorsement of these plans and, and to move forward is appropriate. Yeah, it's, it's sufficiently listed on the agenda to do that.
So. Council, I, I feel, uh, comfortable with items one and two. Uh, three and four, I still would rather wait till after the meetings with text doc. What do you think?
I agree. But I like that idea as well, especially one and two, since we're looking at safety issues. So in the past, we've talked about timeliness. So we could, two, that would be ideal.
I would.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I would agree. I would wonder if moving forward as appropriate includes a stop sign study or if that needs to be a separate motion.
I, I think at this stage, I would just suggest, uh, uh, moving forward as appropriate. And then we'll, uh, because that, we, we may add a little more conversation about that before we decide exactly what we've got to do.
Okay. Councilmember Pinson or Councilmember Ariaga, do you have any comments?
I'm agreeing.
Okay.
I'm good with one and two as it is.
Exactly. Same here.
Councilmember Prince, Councilmember Ibis, before we take a motion, before we have a motion, do you have any comments to make?
No comments. I, I agree with the one and two as well.
Okay.
I agree with one and two as well.
Well, I'll, I'll entertain a motion then that we move forward with, uh, item number one and I, I, I'm sorry, not item with the, uh, number one and number two road improvements as discussed.
So, Mr. Pinson.
Second, Vega.
Okay. So Councilmember Pinson made the motion, seconded by Councilmember Vega. We'll take a vote. Councilmember Pinson, if you'll start, please.
Pinson, yes.
Vega, yes.
Ramitas, yes?
Prince, yes.
Ibis, yes.
Dennis, yes.
Ariaga, yes.
Okay. The vote is unanimous. That motion is passed.
Okay, good. Uh, Mayor, if I just, Councilman Dennis's question there, I just want to make sure that, the, just to clarify the, uh, this, any study on the stop sign, that, that won't slow anything down. Uh, that will proceed as, as appropriate, but, uh, not having added the motion isn't going to slow anything down as far as moving forward.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we're ready to go on?
Wait, timeout. So do you need the, the clarification from the council to, to do the stop sign study?
No, I, I don't think so.
There's an expense to that. I didn't know if we need to, okay. All right.
Well, no, I don't think so. The truth is we, staff would recommend doing it. And, and as Bo said, it's consistent with how we've done it in the past, but we'll need to get a cost estimate for that first, I think, before we can talk about it. I'm just saying, we won't, we won't be waiting for another council meeting if, if, but there's a different way we can discuss that.
All right.
If we need to. All right, Mayor, you ready?
If we're good, we'll go on?
All right. Uh, next item on the agenda is the presentation, the quarterly financial report. You've got this report in your packet. Uh, I've had a chance to review. Council remembers this is a, a legal requirement. We have to make this report, uh, e- every quarter. Uh, Charles is here to, uh, comment on it briefly and answer any questions. Go ahead, Charles.
When I was looking at this before the meeting started, I realized that there's the two errors here, uh, that need to be corrected. The ending balances as of 1231 are correct and the deposits and interest are correct. It's that first column on the ending 930, 2009 on the operating account. That subtotal there is, uh, it was a fixed amount that the, somehow the, the formula, uh, didn't hold. So that, that amount should be $2,720,695.21 for both that subtotal and the total. And then that affects the total at the bottom, which should be 11,964 plus 6146. So I'll make those corrections on the next one. But other than that, then all the other values are correct.
And Charles, you'll, you'll give us the updated, um, for, updated chart when it's done?
Yeah. Yeah. I can send that out.
And Tom, just for, uh, clarification, would you, uh, announce who Charles is so that new council members know who's talking?
All right. Yeah. Charles is a, a chief financial officer, assistant city manager. I thought you were going to ask this question, Mayor. I'll beat you to it. Is that, uh, Charles is the, uh, are the proceeds from the loan, uh, that we gave EDC, is that reflected in these numbers?
No.
We didn't get that.
That was done in January and it'll be shown on the next, uh, investment report.
Okay. But we have received that money now. So. Okay. As always, if there are any follow-up questions, uh, feel free to contact Charles directly. Uh, after he sends out the, the revised report or any other question you might have. We'll just keep going there if you're all right.
Yes, please.
All right. Uh, but that's pretty much the report I have tonight. Unless there may be a question about the departmental reports or we don't really have anything, uh, not on the, on the agenda, but, uh, if there's any other questions council had in, in general about, uh, about this for our new members, uh, I, I will say we, we try to include this general activity report, project update on every agenda. You know, it basically, doesn't mean we have anything to act on, anything that we were going to vote on, we'll list on the agenda. But this is kind of the opportunity for, it's a pretty wide-ranging topic, and to see managers for. So if there's anything that, that, that you need to know about, this is kind of what that's, why that's on the agenda. Just ask about any activity if you have any.
So, Tom, I was, I was looking a- at this, just going through it and looked at the municipal court and we, it, we have 15,000, almost 16,000 pending cases and we chipped away at 109 of them in December that.
Yeah, I, yeah, I don't doubt those are numbers. We're, you know, we're really compromised now, COVID. Uh, we've actually been restricted by the law. Uh, state laws has dictated that no one can have, or even if we decide we're going to do it, we can't have court until, I forget when it is, Charles, you remember February 2nd or something? So, so we've really been, they've really been compromised and, and, uh, and, uh, I think if you're. and, uh, I think if you're familiar with the court process, you kind of know that system's compromised right now too. So, so the activity hasn't stopped on the enforcement end, uh, but, uh, but our opportunity to have court and adjudicate those cases have been really compromised.
Right, well.
Thoughts about that?
Yeah, I'm looking at last December and where we had sixteen thousand and we only disposed of two hundred and thirty-four of those. So, I mean, is that, is that typical that we carry that many and, and do we have opportunity there?
I, I guess then, uh, I'll have to follow up and get you an answer from the judge on that. I don't really know. Charles, you got any thoughts on that?
Yeah, I, I, that, that number's probably been around that number for a number of years. Uh, and that really takes into account, uh, cases that go back seven, eight, nine years. And a lot of those are people that don't live in Elgin, uh, and it's really tough to track those people down. Uh, uh, that was one of the reasons why we wanted to get the Marshall program going. Uh, but those cases, uh, and it's a lot more difficult now, uh, because of the restrictions of COVID and everything, but, um, that, those numbers is, is are what they have been for a number of years. Uh, and we just haven't been able to mobilize the, the necessary resources to fork that number down. Um, but, uh, again, those are mostly cases that are outside, the, the people that are passing through Elgin, uh, and it's kind of hard to crack them down, so. Uh, and, uh, I, there's a prohibition. I mean, one thing that the only way to get it down really in, in a large amount is for the judge to look at those, uh, and the, uh, prosecutor to look at them and dismiss some of those cases that are essentially uncollectible or uh, have been on the books for so long, it's really gonna be unreasonable to try to find those people, but, um, that's the number that are outstanding on the book, so, uh, it has to be dealt with in some way sometime.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I didn't realize that was, that number included all those old warrants we have. So that, that really literally goes, that includes, uh, every adjudicated warrant we've ever issued. So they, they certainly could go back longer than seven years, but yeah, Charles is right. That's exactly why we tried to build the, the, uh, the, uh, uh, Marshall program. It's also exactly why if, if that would work, it would pay for itself, uh, for what we collect out of all those cases. But, uh, so we're not ready, as Charles said, we're not ready just to dismiss those, but, but it is something that has to be dealt with in the future.
Thank you for bringing that up, councilmember Dennis, because that's, I mean, that's eye-opening right there.
I mean, it'd be interesting to see a study on that and see how much is outstanding.
Yeah, I think, if there are any other questions, that's really all I had. That's our report.
Okay. Do we have anything, anybody? Okay, if not, let's move on. Let's move on to item number seven, consent agenda. Uh, all of the items on the consent agenda are considered to be self-explanatory by the council will be enacted with one motion, one second, and one vote. The only thing we have in our consent agenda in this meeting is our city count, uh, city council minutes from January fifth, twenty twenty-one. Do we have any, anybody that has reviewed it and has a situation they want to bring up about our minutes?
I looked at them, Mayor, and I would move that we, um, accept them as presented.
Okay, do we have a second?
A second Vega.
Okay, councilmember Dennis made the motion to accept the mi- the minutes as presented. Councilmember Vega seconded. We'll take a vote. Councilmember Dennis, if you'll start, please.
Dennis, yes.
Ariaga, yes.
Ramirez, yes?
Penson, yes.
Vega, yes.
Prince, yes.
Ibis, yes.
Okay, motion passes unanimously. Let's go to new business. Item number eight on the agenda. The first, the first item under new business is a resolution of the city of Elgin, Texas authorizing a cost participation agreement regarding the construction of County Line Road with TAC development and making certain findings related thereto. Tom?
Thank you, Mayor. This item is, uh, another, um, um, cost-sharing agreement with, uh, another residential development project, uh, on County Line Road. As council may recall, this is, uh, we've actually, this will be the the fourth such agreement for, that we've reached with, uh, private developer to, uh, uh, pay their share of the impact on this roadway, uh, that we're in present time in the process of developing plans and specs to expand and build in the future. Uh, Eagles Landing is a, an existing residential development that's, that's been there for quite a while, but there's actually two more phases of Eagles Landing that has, uh, um, initial approval. And so the developers, uh, are ready to move on to phase two. And we've, uh, worked out this agreement of, with them for their contribution to County Light Road, uh, consistent with, uh, Pepper Grass, um, uh, hometown and, uh, and the Harvest Ridge development that'll be out in that area. This is, uh, y'all are pretty familiar with the Eagles, the existing Eagles Landing and, and, uh, phase two and three will then be to the west, uh, uh, of the existing property there that will connect, uh, but, uh, the improvements, as you can see, uh, on the concept panel below for County Line Road, pretty straightforward to accommodate a five-lane roadway with, uh, with sidewalks, drainage, curb and gutter, et cetera. I think this is a really an important, uh, issue for, uh, uh, the city and that is the first time, I believe, in the city's history that we've ever gotten, um, uh, an appropriate, uh, contribution from private developers to improve the public roadway consistent with what their impact is on the roadway. And, and that's important to understand in this system. This isn't a voluntary contribution on the developer's part. At the same time, it's not an arbitrary number that we just come up with. This is a, a, a mathematical formula that we've utilized that hopefully it's will, uh, uh, re- be reflective of the impact that each development has on the roadway. And so there's an appropriate cost sharing. But the good news here is that, that so now through these four developments, we have a commitment of, of private funds of almost four million dollars committed to the city to help build this phase one project that will probably cost, we're hopeful that it'll cost less than five million to build, probably around five million to build. Uh, and so it, it'll be a major improvement that obviously will, will be a significant upgrade for the, uh, high school campus. Uh, and, and the majority of this, these funds will come from private development and, and not put pressure on the city's general fund or existing taxpayers. So, uh, unfortunately, as we continue to move, uh, south to County Line Road, we may not, or to Highway two ninety, uh, some of that property is already developed. We don't have the same opportunity to get in front of it like we're doing here. But it's, it's a, it's a good step for us. Uh, that project, as you know, council has authorized the planning and engineering to take place now, a- and we're hopeful that by the end of the, this calendar year, uh, we'll have plans and specs back to council and be ready to start, uh, bidding the project out by, by this time next year. So, so this action tonight is simply to formally approve the, the agreement with Eagles Landing and, um, um, uh, it is consistent with, with the same terms and, and agreement with the, with the other four. I think it's important too to remember that that i- these agreements, although I, I don't know that it may be stipulated, but the majority of these agreements include, uh, a stipulation that the city must get started on these projects w- in this project within five years or we have to return the money. So there is a timeframe fitted to that. The, the funds will not come all at once. They'll flow over time. So even though the majority of the funds will ultimately be recovered by the city, uh, it will require basically, we'll probably have to front some of the money to get it built, but in the long run, we can feel good about, uh, uh, about development paying for itself out there on this area. So with that, I'd be glad to try to answer any questions you might have.
Anybody have anything? Don't, uh, councilmember Ibis or councilmember Prince, don't one of y'all live in Eagles Landing?
Yes.
I do. I live in Eagle Fanner. I think we both do, right?
Have you seen the new, the new part being started on yet or no? Is there new development in Eagles Landing?
They can't start yet, Mayor, till they have this agreement in place. Uh, that's one of the.
They won't even start to, okay.
We won't let them start until we have this agreement in place.
I see. Okay.
Yeah, there's a lot of development in the homestead just south of Eagles Landing along County Line Road. And, you know, I don't know if this is the appropriate time to talk about this, but you, you know, kind of on some of the other transportation issues, seeing, um, Bo's having the meeting with Tech Dot. Um, you know, I'm just wondering, you know, if it can be brought up, what Tech Dot's planning for the intersection of County Line Road and two ninety, because my discussions with Tech Dot over fifteen years ago, when I moved into Eagles Landing, they said within the next couple of years that there was gonna be an overpass at County Line Road and two ninety, because I was trying to get a stoplight at. They're doing an over intersection and they said that they weren't putting a stoplight.
Okay. My suggestion, okay, my suggestion, uh, Councilman Ibis is to email Bo and let's see what he can, you know, what he can bring up, uh, about that. So that, so that maybe we can get some more information on that. But, but getting back to the resolution here, uh, do I have a motion to pass the resolution as discussed and read?
So move Penson.
I second.
Councilman Ibis, did you second?
I did.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve the resolution, item number one under new business as discussed and read. The, the motion was made by councilmember Penson, seconded by councilmember Ibis. We'll go for a vote. Councilmember Penson, if you'll start, please.
Penson, yes.
Vega, yes.
Ramirez, yes?
Prince, yes.
Ibis.
Dennis, yes.
Ariaga, yes.
Okay. The coun- the, uh, motion passes unanimously. Let's go to item number two under new business.
Mayor?
Yes.
Uh, you didn't vote.
Oh, I thought I did vote.
No, sir, I started.
Yeah, he voted.
Mary, he voted.
I started.
Yeah, but Mayor, Mary, he, he voted yes.
Okay.
It was in the order.
Yes, I did. I, I did vote. Yes, yes.
All right, my bad. Sorry.
Okay, no problem. Let's go to, to item number two under new business. The resolution of the city council of the city of Elgin, Texas awarding bids to J R Stelter Company for repairs to elevated water tank number two in the amount of eighty-eight thousand, seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars, seven hundred and seventy dollars and making certain findings related thereto. Tom?
Thank you, Mayor. This item, uh, so follow up on what actually council, we'd briefed council on earlier. This is the water tower out on the, uh, high school campus that we've had a leak on for a while and, um, um, as you saw from the information provided in the packet, we've, we've spent over twenty thousand dollars the last couple of years trying to patch it and, uh, and then it started leaking again. And so we came to the conclusion of both given the age and the time since the last time this work had been done and, and the fact that those repair efforts weren't successful, we moved ahead with, uh, doing the engineering, uh, bid specs and bidding to completely resurface, uh, the interior of the tank. Uh, got a lot of good bids, uh, went through that process and the highest and best is, uh, Stelter at, at, uh, this, just under eighty-nine thousand. So, um, Bo, do you have anything else to add to that in general? Glad to answer any questions about the details, but those are the basics.
N- nothing more to add than that. I, I can answer any questions council has.
Oh, is, is this significantly higher than what we were expecting?
No, sir. Uh, we were expecting probably between this and a hundred thousand. So the majority of the bidders came in with that based on the ones we had discussed prior to the bidding.
And do we have an idea of how long that water tank will be out of, out of commission?
Uh, the contractor will have sixty calendar days from start to finish to, to complete the work. Don't anticipate it taking all sixty days, um, for them, but that's what's been allotted to them. Uh, cause they do, one, they have to get it, first part, the city will drain it, you know, over the course of a business, not just necessarily put it out on the ground. Contractor will have to go in there, get it completely dried. Uh, they'll have to blast out and clean up and do any patches after the blasting. And then it's basically a two to three coat process to put it back before you would then let it dry out and then fill it back up with water. Um, so i- it is, if, you know, if you've done the special epoxy to your floor, concrete floor, it's very similar to that same type of process where it's multi-layered over the course.
And we, and we can do this with, uh, minimal or no impact on our water supply to our citizens?
Correct. Uh, you'll, the city has at times, people don't realize it, but the city numerous times does operate on just a singular tank uh, as necessarily, e- especially this tank with, with those repairs. We were, we did empty the tank multiple times to do those repairs before it was refilled up. Should have no impact, uh, on the city's system, uh, other than the booster pumps running a little bit longer, uh, here and there.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions or comments?
I'd just say, Mayor, following that up, that we're, all this work will be done, uh, we're in lockstep with TCQ too. They know what we're doing. We'll be in compliance with all their rules, procedures. Uh, they're, they're apprised of our situation, so.
And so if this, uh, motion is, is passed, the contract work will start fairly soon?
Yeah, uh, essentially we will get the contract documents out to the contractor, uh, this week and essentially look to set up a pre-construction meeting to get them started and official notice to proceed.
Okay, thank you. If there's no further discussion, I'll entertain a motion to pass item number two under new business as discussed and read.
Benson, move, so move.
Okay, so the mo- the, the motion was made by councilmember Penson, seconded by councilmember Dennis? Is that correct?
Correct.
To, uh, to pass resolution of the city council, the city of Elgin awarding bids to J R Stelter Company for repairs to elevated water tank number two in the amount of eighty-eight thousand, seven hundred and seventy dollars and making certain findings related thereto. Uh, let's take a vote on this, on this resolution. Councilmember Penson?
Penson, yes.
Vega, yes.
Ramirez, yes?
Prince, yes.
Ibis, yes.
Dennis, yes.
Ariaga, yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item number three under new business. Pursuant to the article three, section thirteen of the Elgin Home Rule Charter, this is an emergency ordinance declaring what, declaring that a public health emergency exists because of the worldwide COVID-nineteen pandemic. Establishing requirements related to the posting of a public notice by commercial entities and the wearing of face coverings and providing for a savings clause and repealing conflicting ordinances and resolutions. Tom?
Uh, Mayor, this is again, uh, just simply renewing our existing, uh, um, face covering ordinance. This won't have, doesn't represent any change in what we've been doing a while. As you recall, that, uh, As you recall, that under our charter, an emergency ordinance like this, while the council has authority to do it, they automatically expire within sixty days. So even though I know may feel like we just did this in November, but that's why we're having to do it again. It technically expires on January twenty-third, so we won't have another council meeting beforehand. So we're just trying to stay ahead of that to extend it then on to March twenty-third. Of course, the council at any time can take action to rescind the ordinance. But this basically continues the same requirements we have now. The face coverings are required, businesses are are to have signage. I think one thing I want to share with the council and that if you all can help with this, something the mayor has dealt with as well. The one point about this that we have have had some confusion about is that we are not, like every law enforcement agency in the state, we're not using the police department to enforce requiring people to wear face coverings. However, businesses are required to post and require them. And if if there's someone not paying attention to that rule, then it becomes a private property issue where that the business owner, the management, the property, they can call the police, ask for our assistance, and then we can help them in that case. But what we don't do is is go around using the police to enforce that rule for them. So we need the support of businesses. So when you hear people say, when did this business, nobody was wearing a face mask? Well, that process starts first with the management owner of that business asking people, requiring them to wear a face mask, and and they can call the police and ask for our help. We'll certainly respond to that and have in the past, but but that's one little point of confusion. But I don't want to act like that's a huge problem. I think we continue to have the vast majority of folks in town cooperate and are trying their best. And so we continue to get out the information as best we can about this this whole situation. But this ordinance tonight is simply to continue continue those requirements moving forward for the next sixty days.
Anybody have any questions or comments on that? If not, I'll entertain a motion to pass item number three under new business.
So moved, Penson.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by who?
Go ahead, Susie.
Oh, Ariaga.
Okay, so the motion was made by Councilmember Penson and seconded by Councilmember Ariaga to pass item number three as read and discussed, we'll start with a vote, Councilmember Penson.
Penson, yes.
Vega, yes.
Ramirez, yes?
Prince, yes.
Ibis, yes.
Dennis, yes.
Ariaga, yes.
The resolution passes unanimously. Moving on the agenda, we have no no business to discuss in executive session. We'll go to announcements, does anybody have any announcements they would like to make?
I want to say something.
Yes, ma'am.
I want to say that you represented us very well in yesterday's virtual walk. I didn't know you were so eloquent, Ron, you trying to go for president or something?
No, no, we'll let that one go, but thank you, Mary, I appreciate that.
But I felt I felt what you, you know, what you said and and I think the virtual walk really was really was awesome. Yeah.
We actually had a lot of lot of good feedback on that, so.
Well, that's good, but thank you.
Yes, ma'am, anybody else? I I wanted to say that 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 Mr. Madison and I were in a vaccination meeting and there'll be some information coming out tomorrow from the city, so you guys be on the lookout for it. Because I know that's a concern to all of y'all, I'm sure you have, sure you have many of our citizens wondering what the heck is going on and when anything's gonna happen, so look look for that announcement tomorrow.
So.
Tom, do you have anything?
No announcements, Mayor, thank you.
So, Mayor, first of all, I want to say welcome to Ms. Prince and Mr. Ibis. Appreciate y'all signing up for duty for Ward Three. I probably would help you if we had said at the beginning of this meeting how we do our vote. But usually we sit around to dais and so we go around, you know, whoever makes the motion, you know, is the first to vote and then it goes around the table until it gets, you know, to the end. Well, so those of us who have been on the council for a good while, we know how that circle goes and that's how we've been voting. And so y'all actually did fall in and and vote, the mayor was the only one that was actually voting out of order. But but that's okay, we'll let him, we'll give him a pass. But anyway, it's it's helpful, you know, you know, just orientation rules and that sort of thing are sometimes kind of confusing. So or or onboarding, at least not orientation, but onboarding. So anyway, welcome, we appreciate you being here.
Thank you, Councilmember Dennis, for pointing out that I voted out of order, I appreciate that. But we did, I I we 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 managed to talk to to Councilmember Ibis and Prince before the meeting actually started and we are very happy they're here and it's it's like anything else, I'm still new. It will get used to it and you'll have more to study and more to to say about the stuff that we that we're talking about as the meetings go on, so I look forward to that. Anybody else have anything before we adjourn? Okay, with that, we'll adjourn the city council meeting at seven thirty-six P.M. Thank you all.
Thank you so much.
All right, good night.